Buenos dias, hoffe day. Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Environment Revenue and Taxation Procurement is now called to order. It is now 10:30 a.m., Wednesday, September 11, 2019. Notice of today's hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and local media on September 4th, meeting the five-day notice, and September 9th, meeting the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of open government law. I would like to thank and acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today. To my right is Senator Telo Tai'tegui, and to her right is Senator James Moylan. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive testimony on the following agenda items: The executive appointment of Mr. Michael A. Scrow to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. The second item is the executive appointment of Mr. John McKinnon to serve as a member, a banking industry representative of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. The third item is to hear testimony on substituted bill 56-35COR, sponsored by Senator Telo Tai'tegui and cosponsored by William M. Castro. It's an act to add a new Article IV to Chapter 12, Division 1, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a task force to review information, conduct a feasibility study, and develop policy concerning submarine cables. The last item is to hear testimony regarding Bill 90-35COR as substituted, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, cosponsored by Kelly Marsh Titano, and Senator Amanda L. Shelton. It's an act to amend Section 5215 of Subarticle B, Article III, Chapter 5, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing for emergency procurement for threats to the environment, increasing transparency, and otherwise improving emergency procurement. The committee will continue to hear and receive written testimony until 4 p.m. Monday, September 16, 2019. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment Revenue and Taxation and Procurement, or it can be dropped off of the mailboxes here or emailed to office@senatorparis.org. So to begin our agenda, the first item is to hear testimony regarding the executive appointment of Mr. Michael A. Scrow to serve as a member of the Guam Banking Insurance Board. Before we begin, I would like to share with the audience the purpose of the Banking and So, excuse me, I did have the paper. I will bring it up shortly, but perhaps we can begin with, I would like to call up the nominee to the table, as well as those that are here in support of the nominee. So, Mr. Scrow and anybody else who would like to testify. Right now, we have Mr. Art Ilagan, as well as Mr. Nathan Timanglo. So if we can begin with the nominee, I appreciate if you can say your name prior to testimony.
Buenos dias, hoffe day. My name is Michael Anthony Titano Scrow. Good morning, Madam Chair, Senator Perez, Senator Tai'tegui, and Senator Moylan. Thank you all for being here. I'm very honored and humbled to be appointed to the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. First and foremost, I would just like to thank Governor Lillian Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio for giving me the opportunity to serve on this board. I'm a Father Duennius alumni, and I graduated from Sharm Na'ad University of Honolulu, where I attained my Bachelor's of Arts degree in Business Administration. After working my way up the ladder at 24 Hour Fitness in Hawaii, I made the decision I wanted to come back to the island and give back to the island that raised me. I believe I would be a great addition to the team. I have 10 years of managerial experience, primarily in the service and fitness industry, and right now, I am currently the General Manager of Paradise Fitness, and I oversee all three facilities. I know I may not have direct banking and insurance experience, but I do know what it takes to run a successful business, and I understand how unique Guam's business culture is, and of course, how the government plays a crucial role in our economy. I'm a very detail-oriented person, and I believe that we need to focus on the details in order to assure transparency and maximum efficiency in anything we do. So I really, I'm here to ask the 35th Legislature for your support and vote to serve on the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. Sutuas Massey.
Sutuas Massey, Mr. Scrow. So we would like to hear testimony from those that have come in support of him, Mr. Ilagan.
Good morning, senators. My name is Art Ilagan, Artemu Ilagan. I was the former Director of Revan Tax, and I was the former Insurance and Banking Commissioner at Revan Tax. I am here also as a friend of Mike. I've known Mike since he was a little kid. I've known him through both his grandparents, Mr. Pete Scrow, who was a very successful businessperson, and also Mr. Frank Titano, who I became very close to as we got older, and he, of course, passed away. I know Mike is being nominated for a position that's not a banker, insurance person, an attorney. He's being nominated as a private citizen, a person from the business sector that he will fulfill. I think there are like nine positions, and one of them is a private person that he will Mike is, of course, from the private sector. I knew him from both his parents, Tony and Ann Scrow, Ann and I, and even Tony. We were cathedral grade students when we were younger. I also know Mike to be an athlete. I see in his face when he played basketball, he had that fierce, intense ballplayer that wanted to win. He was also a son of, a classmate of my son, so I got to know him a little bit more than, because of my son, Joe, who was also a basketball player. Mike and his class, 2006, have won seven championships of the Father Duennius Alumni Association, which tied with the class of '81, I believe. So I believe they are going to be the championship holders of the most alumni class that won the tournament at Father Duennius. It takes a lot to win seven games. I see that in their players. I saw that in Mike, and I think Mike would bring that to his qualities to help with the regulation of the Insurance and Banking Board. Mike is a very successful manager of the fitness center, Paradise Fitness, which I go to, and hopefully, the government and the new insurance companies would continue with a very successful GovGuan plan for GovGuan employees to make sure that we are fit and not sickly in living our lives. The gym has been very helpful for me. I've had, you know, I've gained weight, I've lost weight, but going to the gym the last three years has kind of made me maintain my health. I think without the gym, I'd be probably way overweight. I have a lot of problems with sugar, and weight, and fat, and all that stuff, so I know that Mike, with his intensity and the way he is, the way he's a detailed person, he would be a very good asset to the Insurance and Banking Board. So I am in support of Mike. I hope the legislature proceeds and confirms Mike's nomination. Thank you.
Sutuas Massey, Mr. Ilagan. Next on the list is Mr. Nathan Timanglo.
Thank you, Senator Flores, other members of the Legislature present. My name is Nathan Timanglo. I currently serve as the Executive President and Chief Human Resources Officer of Do'kuma Pacific. I'm here to submit my testimony in support of Mike. I've known Mike pretty much my whole life. On a personal level, you know, he's no doubt had my back for much of growing up. I've also worked with him on a professional level for the last few years. You know, the very fact that he came back to Guam, you know, he wanted to come back and contribute back to the island, is really a testimony to his willingness to be home and to support the island that raised him. He's also raising a family, a new family now, and, you know, no doubt, he has and possesses the temperament, the knowledge, the know-how to really contribute to the Banking and Insurance Board. I remember a few months back, Mike was asking me questions around, you know, which, you know, which board do you think he can contribute to? And I was like, you know, take your pick. I think it's really just a matter of you wanting to step in and serve, and I no doubt, no doubt, he would be a contributing member to the board. Even just this morning, we were talking about, he actually read through all the minutes of the board from the past, all the sessions that were online. So, you know, he's done his homework, and he's ready and willing to step up, and I think, just from a personal perspective, you know, he also possesses the integrity needed to have that sort of focus with a board, of course, that does really important work for Guam. In closing, you know, I think, with all that said, you know, I think Mike also is one of the most driven people I know. You know, Art spoke earlier about the seven championships that our class has won. You know, Mike was a key part of that. You know, he was, he's pretty much one of the centers of that, and, you know, he's quite humble, and in terms of my respect for him, he's no doubt one of the few people I trust. So, you know, I think it speaks volumes of his character, and then I think, I look forward to your confirmation of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timanglo. So, I just, also actually, I want to go back to some of the duties of the Board members and Commissioner. So this is for the, for the public to hear. So the powers and duties of the Board and Commissioner include: to regulate its own procedures and practices in accordance with the Administrative Adjudication Act; to implement by regulation, not inconsistent with law, any provision of this title, and to define any term not defined in this title as may be reasonably necessary or appropriate for the administration of this title and other laws of Guam relating to banking and insurance; to affirm, reverse, or stay the enforcement of any order or ruling of the Commissioner; to establish such rules and regulations in accordance with the Administrative Adjudication Act as may be necessary for the operation and management of banks; the Board may recommend a removal of a Director, Trustee, Officer, or employee of a national or state bank; the members of the Board shall have access to any record of the division with reference to banking and insurance matters; it can also examine any person under oath in connection with any subject relating to a duty imposed upon or a power vested in the Commissioner or the Board, and these powers shall be enforced by the Superior Court of Guam. The Board shall continuously review the provisions of this title and other laws regulating banking and insurance in Guam, and may, from time to time, make recommendations for changes therein to maga haga any les la tora in the Commissioner's annual report. So, having said this, you know, being a member on the Board that's nominated, that is outside the banking and insurance industry, do you feel that there's anything in your capacity that would limit you from carrying out these duties?
No, Senator Perez, thanks for the question. There definitely isn't anything at the moment.
Okay. So, when you say "at the moment," what is, can you explain that part?
Well, as of right now, after reviewing like the minutes, and it's to my understanding, after reading the law, and thank you for taking the time last week to sit down with us and explain that. I believe we meet quarterly, and the existing Chairwoman and Commissioner, I believe, is Ms. Shimizu, and there's nine members that are going to be appointed, so I'll make time to make sure I'm available and willing and able to contribute in any way possible.
Okay, thank you. In regards to, in the case that there is a member that has been called to question in the banking and insurance industry, what are some of, have you been in any situation where you had to make a call in that regards to, you know, if there's a conflict or a question regarding their capability, or in violation of any of the laws?
Yes, so to answer your question, as far as taking conflicts, I don't take conflicts lightly, and my integrity, and evaluating the situation at hand, and being a manager, you always have to make complex decisions, making sure we have a clear overview of the situation, and define all the terms within what's happening. I think that's very crucial in making the decision. So I don't know if I answered the question, or if I understood the question correctly.
Yeah, can you just expound on that?
What was the question again? Sorry, I just want to make sure.
So, when you're dealing with, let's see, a member in the banking and insurance industry, and there's a question as regards to their conduct, or whether they violated any laws or procedures, have you been in situations that are similar to this, where you had to make such a determination on their continuation as a member or a practicing member within the industry?
I've never experienced that firsthand in the private sector, dealing in the service industry and the fitness industry, but if I were supposed to encounter this issue and problem, I would not take it lightly, and I would definitely voice my concern with the team prior to making any rational decision moving forward.
And how would you base your determination?
Well, first, I would make sure I have all the facts in front of me, and make sure we have all the resources at hand to make that decision together collectively.
So being not part of the industry, what advantages do you think that holds or disadvantages?
I really think it just gives a different set of eyes. Being born and raised on Guam, but working in the private sector, I really realize that, you know, the government does play a crucial role in our economy, and things take time when it comes to the government, and that's something that I hope to contribute to make things more efficient, and enhance and enforce those laws, and making sure it's clear in our transparency in communicating those terms to the people.
Thank you. In regards to conflict of interest, how do you determine a conflict of interest, if it exists?
Well, right now, I don't believe there is any conflict of interest in my case, as I'm a non-industry, so as of right now, there is no conflict of interest for me, but moving forward, if there was one, I would definitely recur myself from that situation.
Thank you. I would like to, at this time, recognize my colleague, Senator William Castro, and Senator Kelly Marsh Titano is joining me here today.
Good morning, Senator Castro, and Senator, thank you.
I would like to now open the floor to my colleagues for questions. Senator Telo Tai'tegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak. Michael, I too, like Art, have known you since you were very young, and the first thing I wanted to say, I think Nathan hit it on the nose when he mentioned you coming back home to contribute to the island. Someone in your capacity could easily, you know, live in the States and have a good time back there, and put all your knowledge and everything to that community back there in the States, like Hawaii. Hawaii is a beautiful place to live, and I know you enjoyed it back there, going to school there in Hawaii, but I really want to thank you for coming back. It's important that we keep this young youth knowledge here on this island. We're losing so much of it. And so first, I want to thank you for doing that, and second, I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate, contributing your time to our community to serve on this board. Again, you're an athlete, there's so many things you can do after work and have a good time with, but I really appreciate you. It's a reflection, and your parents are, I know your parents, and they're the same kind of people who contribute to the community and do what they can to help our island. So, you know, Michael, even though you don't have the experience in banking, I think it's what's needed on a board, a different perspective, not somebody who's jaded by banking systems and the status quo. What you're going to bring to this table is new ideas, fresh ideas, a different eyes on banking, and I'm sure you're going to study as much as you can the process, but at the same time, bring in some good ideas to the industry. So the only thing I have is, actually, my colleague asked if you're going to be able to meet all the meetings, and you did answer that, but in the event that you are not, can you promise us that if you can't make these meetings, that you will let the Chairman know so that they can fill this vacancy as soon as possible?
Yes, of course, of course, Senator.
Have you attended any of the meetings right now currently at the, with the Banking Board?
No, I haven't. I believe they meet quarterly. The last meeting, according to the minutes, was in April.
So you have read the minutes?
Yeah, I reviewed the minutes right when I was appointed to the Board. I wanted to make sure I did my research and I know what I'm getting myself into.
So my last question, Michael, to you is, why this board? I'm pretty sure you can probably, if you'd like, to go on any other board to be on, but why do you want to be on this board?
Like Nate mentioned, and I mentioned it to Senator Perez, you know, being in the service industry for this long, I've always had a passion to just serve people and help people, and to serve on any board, to be honest, I could bring a lot of fresh ideas, like you mentioned, but as far as banking and insurance go, and every business works with banks and insurances, but this specific board, after reading the minutes and understanding what their role is for the Office and the Commissioner of Banking and Insurance, I'm very excited because we play a crucial role for the economy, and I just want to make things more efficient and making them more detail-oriented to move forward.
Well, I wish you the best of luck, and you have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tai'tegui. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Tai'tegui. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Scrow, congratulations on your nomination. I'm looking forward to seeing great things coming from you, and as expressed by your two folks that came to testify on your behalf, Mr. Ilagan and Mr. Timanglo, obviously, your character is excellent, and you're a driven man, so that's a good thing. I'm most impressed by your business background and your entrepreneurship. I think it's important that our committee members do have that background to bring to the table and the fresh eyes and the excitement I believe that you have. So I'm looking forward, very forward, to seeing your name on our next upcoming session so we can complete your nominations, you can get to work for the people of Guam. So congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Castro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for accepting the nomination, Mr. Scrow. I had a chance to look through your resume. You're obviously an educated young man, you're an experienced manager, and just when I thought your basketball skills were superior, saw you at the FD alumni, I'm very pleased to know that you've been appointed, and so I'm impressed with the fact that the appointing authority saw it fit to get someone who's a lay individual, or I think if I heard you correctly, who said that you're not from the industry. I think that's a unique perspective, as the prior speaker brought out. You're also flanked by two people I highly respect, someone in the HR field and someone who's a finance and taxation expert, and so with them flanking you and offering testimony and support of the nomination, my confidence rests with you. Congratulations, and thank you again, Mr. Scrow.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Senator Kelly Marsh Titano?
Manana seeds you, Louis. My reflections or my comments are similar to those that have been expressed. I wasn't here to hear all the testimony, but I was able to read through some of the written testimony that was provided. And so, as was mentioned before me, to hear those that have a lengthy relationship with that industry, having them supporting you in this position and understanding what you would be able to bring as somebody who is representing the private industry, that means a lot, and that carries a lot of weight. So that's very important for us to be able to hear, and for us to be able to consider. And some of the things that they were mentioning is that you have a good instinct, that you've really developed a lot of skills in running the fitness gyms that you have, and that that really speaks well to your ability to learn quickly and learn what's needed, and bring all of that to the table in the Board. So, as was mentioned, that means a lot to us, and we agree that they spell out you being a qualified and good asset for the Board. Sutuas Massey.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titano. So yes, thank you, Mr. Scrow, for accepting this executive nomination. I do look forward to seeing, you know, the new perspective that you bring to the Banking Commission and Insurance Commission. I think it's important, you know, knowing that you were appointed in view that you are not part of the industry, I think that that's an important role, you play an important role, to kind of anchor the commission in the community. And I think it's important to see that, you know, with your background in sports and, you know, the excellence that you achieved there, I think some of the skills that you've learned on the field can be applied in the boardroom. So I also look forward to seeing that the laws that you, that we have in place, and, you know, with your fresh perspective, that, you know, perhaps there are ways that we can make it more efficient, as well as upholding the laws. I think that's what's really critical as a Board member, is making those determinations where there's conflict of interest, and, you know, applying it, and, you know, recusing yourself of necessary. So it is a great responsibility, and so, again, thank you for accepting this nomination. Thank you so much. Thank you for everybody who have come here today, providing testimony on Mr. Scrow's behalf. So we'll move on to the next agenda item. It's regards to executive appointment of Mr. John McKinnon to serve as the Banking Industry Representative on the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. At this time, I would like to call up Mr. McKinnon, as well as those that have come to testify regarding his appointment. So to start off with, I would like to start with the nominee's testimony, and if you can state your name before testifying.
Good morning, and thank you for hearing me today. I would like to also thank the Governor for appointing me to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Bank, or Board. My name is John McKinnon, and was born and raised on Guam. I grew up in N'ron and spent 10 years in Washington State in my late 20s and 30s. While out there, I got into the banking industry and worked at a large financial institution. Although I was doing well, I missed Guam and wanted to return and live the life that I grew up and loved. Upon my return, I was seeking to work for a small community bank, and was fortunate to gain employment with Guam's locally-owned community bank, Bank Pacific. I have over 20 years of banking experience and have sat in many chairs throughout my career. I started in the deposit side of banking, moved into consumer lending and mortgage loans, and I'm now the VP Compliance and Security Officer overseeing that department. This duty requires me to understand both local and federal laws, and I look to use my experience and contribute to the island through this committee. I would also, it would also be my first endeavor to participate in the Civic Committee, and I look forward to the experience and responsibilities that will come with it. I understand our duty would be to oversee and supervise the banking and insurance activities in Guam, and looking out for the welfare of all who call Guam in regards to the merchant industry their home. I ask you for your approval of my membership to the Guam Banking and Insurance Board, and will return, and in return, I will provide all that I have through my experience and my time to serve our island. Thank you.
Sutuas Massey, Mr. McKinnon. So at this time, I would like to also have the others that have signed up to testify So at this time, I would like to also have the others that have signed up to testify. We have Mr. Flores.
Senator Marsh Taiteno, thank you. My fellow Republicans, I'm Phil Flores, in favor of the nomination of John McKinnon to the Guam Banking and Insurance Commission. In my role as an officer and board member of Guam's first locally-owned financial institution, Bank Pacific, I worked with John McKinnon for 12 years. During that time, he has served in various roles in the bank, including in credit and operations. However, he now holds one of the most important positions at Bank Pacific as the Vice President, Compliance and Security Officer. Security Officer is a pretty straightforward definition and it's challenging. I mean, what happened in the good old days when they'd rob us with guns and set of computers? The compliance officer, however, is a much more involved and meaningful since the days of 9/11, whose heroes we honor today, to the stateside housing disaster in the 2008 era. Since then, compliance, the ever-evolving rules and regulations, has risen to the forefront of every bank in America. John defends that forefront for us and does so in an exemplary manner. By chance, just this morning, John and I had a conference call with two FDIC examiners. There's no need to worry, everything's good. I just bring it up. My point is that FDIC values what John could do for us at Bank Pacific. In my mind, he would make a great addition to the Banking and Insurance Commission. Senator, Madam Chair, you asked one of the other members what they would do if they saw something going wrong. That's John's job. When he first started to cook over his compliance, we used to call him the Archbishop, but that was a much more popular term then. But now we just call him John, and he's the security officer, and it is his job to go around saying, "That's not right, you got to fix that." And he'll do that at the Banking Commission. You know, I had a couple of jokes, I thought I was going to get a smile. Anyway, that's it.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Flores. Next one on the list, Mr. San Augustin.
Good morning, Senators. My name is Rob San Augustin, and I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak in support of Mr. McKinnon for his appointment. I've known John since 1990, when I first came to the island and went to FD. He's been one of my closest friends for almost the last 30 years, as far as his character. He's a soft-spoken, funny guy, even killed, and he's always stayed out of trouble. He's always been the guy that I can talk to about my life or my problems, and he's always made time to listen to me and, you know, help or listen. He's a great father to his four children, he's helped raise another friar, and he has three younger children that he's doing a great job with. You know, aspire to be a father like him, if I get the chance to. As far as his work, he's always loved cars, so that speaks to his problem-solving ability. He's a hard worker. When we were younger, we'd be hanging out and John always had to go to work, whether it's going to his father's house to help rebuild a car on the weekend, or, you know, work to afford his next project car. He's been in the banking industry for a couple decades now, so, and he's worked hard to get where he is today. I think he would be good for the board because he has experience, knowledge, and perspective. I mean, he's a capable and responsible guy, and I'm happy he's being given the opportunity to help the island, and I'm proud of him that he's stepped up and accepted the challenge. So I fully support him being part of the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. San Augustin. Mr. Pangolinan?
Hafadeh, good morning. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and the rest of the senators that are joining us on the panel this morning. I am also here in favor of the nomination for Mr. John McKinnon for the Banking and Insurance Commission. You know, I guess to start, you know, my personal feeling, you know, we need another board, like we need another WhatsApp chat group, right? But in this sense, I truly, I truly stand by the importance and the functions of our Banking and Insurance Commission. They play a vital role in our economy, and with that, you need proper leadership, you need the proper vision, you need the steady professional, and you get that, actually, with John. Like Rob, John and I are, oh, and another young handsome man up there, both four of us are Class of 92, Father Dwayne Isgrads, and so I'm here to support our brother for nomination and your consideration on this board. Just to close it out, and I don't want to take too much time, because it's freezing in here. But, you know, I heard the testimony earlier and some of the reaction to Mr. Scrooge's nomination, and you guys had a lot of wonderful things to say. He's a, and if I could, I would like to also ask for your support for his confirmation. But, you know, you need, I think, a nice balance of that out-of-the-box, new thinking with some seasoned, you know, coupled with some seasoned professionalism. And so, you know, with the two candidates that you have here today, I think that's a very nice duo. If you can just package them together and do the bundled confirmation, I think that would be a great win for the island. Sutusmasi.
Sutusmasi. So I guess now we're on to the questions. So, Mr. McKinnon, so I'm going to ask the same question. Have you been in a situation where you had to make a determination, where you had to enforce certain rules that may go against an employee or a subordinate? And in this case, if by serving on the board, you would have to make the determination on a person that is questioned for their conduct regards to compliance of law?
Thank you. Yes, I have. As Phil had stated, that's actually part of my duties right now, with security at the bank and also the regulations. My role is really to make sure that we're doing what the law says, and if I see any factors there, I have to go to that person and find out what's going on. So my role is to understand why they made the decisions and if it's valid or not, and of course, unfortunately, if it's not a good reason, then I have to enforce that we take action against that, and that's no problem with me.
And are you able to determine when a conflict of interest exists?
Definitely. I can't say that I have any specific experience that I could share with you, but I do understand that the way it is today, when people are being accused or charged of something, or reviewed for their actions and stuff like that, that if there's any kind of, I get that they might think the person's biased against them, that it's best to step away from it, and I have no problems if there's any kind of a situation where they might feel that to walk away or to move away from, to remove myself from that discussion.
Thank you. Do you have any conflicts of interest? I mean, maybe that's a question that can be answered already, but are there any conflicts of interest that you have?
I do not have any conflicts of interest unless Bank Pacific, I guess, would be involved if I understand the correction correctly. And of course, in that situation, I would excuse myself.
Great, thank you. So that's my questions. I would like to open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Taitegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, and thank you so much, John, for stepping up to the plate to do this, especially with four children. It gets kind of difficult, you know?
One moved out, so it's three now.
Oh.
It's a little easier.
Okay. Well, I really greatly appreciate it. Though I don't know you personally, I really appreciate the testimony of others, especially people I know, Mr. Flores and San Augustin and Carl, I know these gentlemen, and what they have to say about you, all the good that have to say, takes a great, says a great deal about you, because I do respect these gentlemen here today. And so with their support, I'm sure you have my support as well.
Thank you very much.
You know, and the only thing I have a question is, have you had an opportunity to be a part of the program, or you'll probably have to go through it? It's an ethics for government that I think board members are required to go through. Have you been through any type of ethics programs?
I have not, but I'm willing to do that.
Okay, yeah, that's one thing that's important, that you need to attend on that one. Have you been to any of the meetings they've had, or have you had the opportunity to read the minutes?
Yeah, I haven't attended any of them, but I did go through several of the minutes for the last couple of years, and just review it to see what it's about.
Okay, great. Well, being in the industry, I'm sure you have a wealth of knowledge to contribute to this, and I, again, greatly appreciate you stepping up to the plate and spending some of your time to help our community. Thank you so much, John.
Thank you very much, same here.
Okay.
Thank you, Senator Taitegui. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. McKinnon, congratulations on your nomination. I appreciate you taking, as you know, you're busy at the bank, especially with the FDIC, so that's a good thing, but you're still going to make the time, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Your fellow brothers from FD had some excellent statements to say about you, Mr. San Augustin and Mr. Pangolinan, obviously want to continue their long-term friendship with you and have a lot of good things to say, so that's another plus for you. My fellow Republican, his notes were really clear of all the experience that you have done at the bank and being in your position as compliance and security officer. It's a lot of weight on your shoulders, but you're managing it quite well. So just like the FDIC recognizes all your accomplishments and what a good job you're doing, I'm looking forward to seeing your name on the next session so we can get your nomination approved. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Castro?
Madam Chair, despite the rain, you know, it's a great day. We had the privilege earlier to recognize the fallen and the heroes of 9/11, but it's an awesome day because even the chairman emeritus of the Republican Party can acknowledge that you too, Madam Chair, would make a great Republican. So thank you so much for that, Phil. In all seriousness, you know, I wanted to ask my colleague here, and in full disclosure, I'm his classmate, we're both FD graduates, and so I have two questions, and we also have a very distorted sense of humor. So, you know, why you and why now? I don't want Mr. McKinnon to answer that question. Instead, Madam Chair, I'll put myself forward. Why him? Well, you know, John has always been a very humble member of the class, he's always been in positive light all throughout the duration of our high school career. And if I had to trust the people's assets to serve as a trustee on behalf of the great territory, I trust John with our money and our policies. You're a very educated gentleman, you're well-suited for the position, and I want the listening audience and all my colleagues to know, on the question of conflicts of interest, Madam Chair, I couldn't get John McKinnon to cheat on an FD exam, even if we filled in all the questions for him. His credibility and his integrity is intact. I trust and I respect you, John, and I wish you well. Also, in all seriousness, to my colleagues, you've heard from someone who's a registered Democrat and who served, a respected person, elected official, the former delegate to Congress, the Honorable Madeleine Zebra Dalio, and you also heard from a very independent thinker, someone we all respect as a competitive world-class athlete, decorated golfer, and so you have people from both sides of the spectrum speaking to your credibility, Mr. McKinnon. And so I thank you very much for accepting the nomination, for accepting more work, and for accepting the charge to serve as a guardian for the people over a major, major industry that is perhaps the single greatest driver of this economy, thus the region. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Senator Castro. Senator Marsh Taiteno?
Hafadeh, and good to see you continuing to be here. So this hearing is an important event that allows us to be able to hear what you have shared, and what you have shared is extremely helpful in providing us that confidence in the nomination of Mr. McKinnon. Each of you have known him for quite a length of time, so you have that to really provide weight to your assessment and to your endorsing him, and that means a lot, of course. And just looking at his track record, Mr. McKinnon's experience, the positions that he's had for 19, 20 years, that really says something, and he has risen through the ranks. And so, again, that says something about his ability and people's belief in what he is providing. So those are very good as well. Certainly, having that experience in compliance and review, some of the other work that he does, and it was a very important point, I think, that Mr. Flores brought up, is that this is an ever-evolving set of rules and regulations, and it takes a lot to be able to stay on top of all of those continuing changes. And he really has a lot of, just a belief in, and has seen that you have done that very well. And so, again, that means a lot to us. And I really liked also what Mr. Pangolinan mentioned, is that he is seasoned, and at this time, when we're thinking about the board, it is very good to have a balance about those who are perhaps from other sectors of the community and bringing aboard new ideas perhaps, or new perspectives, but also needing to balance that with somebody who has that wealth of experience. So with all of that, and even hearing from fellow colleagues who were classmates about your level of integrity and their trust and belief in you, all of that really adds up to my, along with the others, being able to provide my support to your nomination. So sutusmasi to all of you for coming out today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Taiteno, and yes, thank you so much, Mr. McKinnon, for accepting the executive nomination and taking on public service at such a young age and applying what you have experienced and your expertise in the private sector. And we look forward to seeing your work and protection of the laws that oversee banking and insurance. So sutusmasi for everyone who's come here today to testify and taking time out of your busy schedule. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe? We could take a two-minute recess. So the committee is now back from recess. We would like to continue with our third agenda item, which is regards to hearing testimony on Bill Number 56-35COR, as substituted, sponsored by Senator Telo Taitegui, co-sponsored by William M. Castro. It's an act to add a new Article IV to Chapter 12, Division 1, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a task force to review information, conduct a feasibility study, and develop policy concerning submarine cables. I would like to now introduce, have the sponsor of the bill provide introductory statements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for scheduling a second public hearing on Bill 56 as required by our standing rules for measuring, for measures that are materially different from their introduced version. Bill 56 as substitute proposes to create a task force to review information, conduct feasibility study, and develop policy concerning submarine cables for the Guam Legislature to consider. I wish to thank Mr. Dan Taidinko of GTA Tele Guam and Ricky Hernandez of GIDA for participating in the initial public hearing for Bill 56 and for offering recommendations such as for decision-makers to consider ways to support a new data center industry on Guam. Through its testimony during the initial public hearing on Bill 56, GIDA supports the idea of providing potential tax incentives rather than potential taxation, which may alleviate the possible decisions to growing the industry that come with fiber optic undersea cable landing stations on Guam such as established of data centers. Madam Chair, I'm pleased to inform the community and the listening audience that the conversations with representatives from other organizations such as the National Conference of State Legislature, NCSL, and the Federal Communication Commission, FCC, remain active. During my participation at the 2019 NCSL Legislative Summit, I discussed this matter with Ms. Heather Morton, NCSL Program Principal for Physical Affairs, seeking any available information with respect to how other U.S. jurisdictions are supporting the industry while ensuring their tax system isn't taken advantage of. I'll also be scheduling a conference with FCC representatives in the coming weeks and look forward to any technical assistance they're able to extend to the Guam Legislature on this critical issue. Madam Chair, in closing, I'll continue working closely with stakeholders, your committee, and others who may be interested in this topic as we move forward and support the proposed task force on submarine cables, so that members will be able to ask the right questions, learn new information from industry experts and regulatory agency, and come back to the legislature with recommendations that will help create new jobs and additional economic activity benefiting our family and island community. Thank you again, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to speak on Bill 56 as substituted.
Sutuas Maasi, Senator Taitegui. We have one person who's coming to testify regarding the substitute bill. Can you call up Mr. Taidinko?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Senators Taitegui, Castro, and Marsh Titino. On behalf of Tele Guam Holdings LLC, DBA GTA, I'm Dan Taidinko, Executive Vice President. I thank the good senator for the invitation to come back and comment on the substitute measure before all of us today. When I last appeared before the committee this past June, I testified that the original measure, as introduced, had not focused on attracting investment, rather the provisions preventively discouraged growth and investment in digital infrastructure on island. The marked-up version now provides a bit more clarity with the goals of the authors. While it's commendable to see and hear lawmakers discuss policy formulation and development for submarine cable investments, hopefully it's with the goal of helping to pave the way and not getting in the way. There already exists ample regulatory requirements and hurdles for would-be investors and operators to meet and comply with. Local and federal entities have jurisdiction and regulation on both the wet and terrestrial segments for the submarine cables. Adding more wouldn't be helpful. Assuming the measure passes muster and enactment, the task force should collate all those existing regulatory requirements into an organized regime, which the government, namely GIDA, could ultimately use as a marketing tool, perhaps with incentives to attract more investment and harness the potential of making Guam a data epicenter. As previously offered in my prior testimony, I noted that when the ownership of our company sought to enter the cable operating space with the landing station back in 2017, we decided to make such investment for the benefit of the subscribers and the community. The local demand and appetite for data, like everywhere else, has been insatiable. Significant time and financial resources have been expended studying and assessing the benefits of such. More capacity, greater speeds, and reduced latency for individuals, enterprise, and public consumers. People and businesses have demanded a need for digital, for greater digital speed and capacity. They don't want their smartphones or their laptops or their other devices bogged down uploading or downloading data and information which they need immediately for their business, their personal communications, or even their entertainment. To fulfill that demand and expectation, we made the necessary investments for the customers and the community. These types of investments are atypical and not insignificant to ensure the high-speed connectivity both locally and globally. The monetary sums and effort to get the infrastructure in place for the residents and businesses is vast and undertaken without any government financial support. Our recent investment in the village of PD for our landing station and expansion is an example of how such infrastructure can be built out in tandem with the community. We partnered with the government and the PD mayor and municipal planning council to make the investment work for the village and the island. From the government leases we pay on the water side and also on the land side, to the corporate business privilege and employee payroll taxes we pay, to the specialized, high-skilled employees we train and employ to operate the landing station, to the donations we make to PD in the way of village maintenance, a new multipurpose basketball court, their village activities, and the Wi-Fi services we'll be deploying in their village centers, we're proud of the partnership we have here. To facilitate the potential development and rise of new industry or further investment, specifically data centers or establishment of a data center park, the committee or task force should redirect their focus on that particular objective, and they should probably look to Singapore as an example. I think I shared some of the information with some of you prior, but I'll resend it back to you. That country has skyrocketed near the top globally for its suitability for new and international data centers. I'd respectfully request the committee and body consider looking again through a different lens to establish a new pillar for our economy. Rather than the subcable focus, there should be emphasis on data center development. Again, as previously testified, the emergence and growing need for data centers is one area which you may want to explore for that development, and we have the potential to be a bridge for data center operations in this region of the world. Our neighbors in South Korea, Singapore, and Thailand have rolled out aggressive and attractive incentives for data center operators. The study called for in the measure for GIDA to conduct is a great idea. If the measure's passed, I'm sure GIDA will report back to the legislature on what it would take to make data center operations viable and attractive here for new investment. The potential is enormous for the island, and it's an opportunity that the legislature and all the policymakers should explore and take advantage of in expanding our economic base with a new pillar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taidinko. So, this is the only one, only person that's come to testify. So, regarding questions, has there been, I guess, the importance of this bill is that it's meant to do a study on opportunities and providing incentives. Besides data centers, are there other opportunities out there that can provide, as an economic stimulus for Guam, to your knowledge?
I've just basically focused it on data and telecom and stuff. I mean, I'm sure there's lots of others, and Mr. Hernandez or Ms. Mendiola would probably be able to tell you what suite of potential investments they would want to develop. And they should sit down with the legislature and your committee to figure that out. But I think the data center, or data park, is a very, very good opportunity here for the legislature to consider. Not the, I mean, the subcables, they're ready here, but those investments are few and far between. Not everybody's building a submarine cable, simply because it's just, there's enormous cost with it. You're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. Data centers don't require that. So, I think Senator Castro, in the last hearing, he was very focused on the data center concept development for the island as well, so.
What about the competitive advantage as far as our location? Is there any opportunities there?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're American-flagged, U.S. laws and stuff. Opportunities in the way of data centers? Absolutely. I mean, are you focusing back just on the submarine cables?
Either one.
Yeah, I mean, that's an advantage here. The downside to that, though, is electricity costs. I think I mentioned this previously. Electricity costs, labor costs, wages, so those are downsides, but, you know, that, as compared to going somewhere else. They certainly can go to the NMI, which is just a short click north of us.
Okay, thank you. Senator Castro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Mr. Taidinko. I too can acknowledge the importance of wanting to move towards protecting any sound investments. I think the good proffer of the bill certainly can acknowledge that the asset serves not just a territorial but a national interest, and I think, without second-guessing her, that would be one of her main motives. I also agree with you that the outcome, at least from my perspective as being a co-sponsor to this measure, one of the anticipated outcomes would be to determine how to create a greater climate for wider investments. Things, as you mentioned, not once, but maybe four times now, three times today and the last time in the last hearing, the need for maybe a data center. In my humble opinion, being an expert, just knowing a little bit about the industry, I think with greater throughput, albeit through this medium, could come greater opportunities, and a data center is one of them. You can also have multinational language content management centers, and the list goes on. I do want to state for the record that I support your sentiment. I know my colleague and I seek not to see a greater lag in the speed to slow the industry, rather to grow the industry. We want to speed up the time to web, to use a passe phrase, if you will, and to certainly entice and facilitate heavier investments with fewer risk. There is, I wouldn't say it's a major point of where we depart or differ. I like to look at it as another way to, if I could reframe this. Same sentiment, Mr. Taidinko, but if I can reframe it in my own words. Where I think we may differ is I don't see it as the federal government, to my colleague, the prime author, as the federal government having a sufficient set of rules and policies be set upon the territory. Rather, I see this as a perfect opportunity to create a vehicle by which the territory establishes a better framework that we can proffer to Congress so that we can achieve the goals that you yourself have acknowledged. A greater investment, minimal risk, protecting a national territorial asset. I see it as domestic policy driving a change in federal posture and federal law, perhaps because of certain regulations in the Department of Commerce or the FCC or other pertinent agencies. There are prohibitions from allowing the firm that you represent to enter into other markets or service provisioning, and I think this is where maybe we can make, we put together that perfect marriage, if you will. I guess you really wouldn't know until you explore it. That's where I see the opportunity, Senator Taitegui is, and I are consistent on, and I think we're on the same page with this too, Dan.
Well, it's kind of interesting that you bring that up, you know, with regards to federal oversight, and that, the submarine cables are licensed by the FCC. Senator Taitegui kind of alluded to that in her discussions or whatever she's going to be doing with the FCC. Their eyeballs are on Guam with regards to these types of investments, and it's a heavily regulated industry in that regard, primarily for national security. There just came out in the news a couple of days ago within the industry. It's not something that people normally look at, but there was another cable that was interested in starting up to traverse Asia through Guam over to the West Coast, and, but unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, but the Team Telecom is the group of the federal security entities, which consists of Commerce, Department of Defense, Department of Homeland Security, CIA, Naval Investigative Services, OSI, et cetera, the whole alphabet soup of security agencies. They do the review on applications for any would-be cable operators that are going to be operating in U.S. territories or even in the mainland, and they've already telegraphed that that will not be, that particular cable project will not be approved because of the concerns they have with Chinese activity and the Chinese participation in investment that's been indicated to be part of that cable. So, we work closely hand-in-hand with the FCC. The FCC also gives some of its charge to the local PUC to the extent that it wants to. The PUC does not have regulatory authority over cables. Regulatory authority for cables is simply vested with the FCC for security concerns and reasons. But I understand what you're saying, though.
Thank you. And, Madam Chair, if I could just add one more, just for the sake of discussion. Thank you for the feedback. So, you referenced the CNMI, and I know I had conversations with some folks in the 20th, I think, the 21st legislature there, and, you know, just to build upon the capacity, the infrastructure between Guam and the rest of the world, or the CNMI in Guam, you know, one of the opportunities, as it may relate to the buildup, could be the opportunity for cyber warfare training here in the Pacific, given the capacity of the undersea cables or what other, whatever other medium or media may exist to bring in this kind of data at the rate of speed that's necessary to conduct such training. So, I think it's, the opportunity's enormous. It's just a matter of setting up the structure and going forward with it and seeing how far we can take it. But I am in full support of Senator Taitegui's measure for the purposes of defining and possibly having a hand in defining that future so that it can ultimately benefit the people of Guam. I'm certainly not looking forward to additional regulation to stymie growth.
Sutuas Maasi, Senator Castro. Senator Marsh Titino?
Sutuas Maasi, Madam Chair. So, it's interesting to be looking at this bill shortly after it was mentioned in a previous testimony about developing more task forces, and I do see the importance of them. It's an opportunity to bring experts together and really have them look very intensively at a situation to provide us that information and their expert advice. I do take into consideration the testimony that was provided, where we do need to provide some balance. We need to make sure that this is not creating anything to impede development and growth in the industry, but it does seem like it has that opportunity to identify some of the issues and maybe even tackle those then in its recommendations and passing on what it has observed. It's very good that in there, they will be looking for ways to provide incentives, to expand the industry, so those elements seem to be very good results of such a task force. And so, part of what I was looking at, and I'll just comment on, is looking a little bit at the nuts and bolts, if you will, of the task force, and it's come to my attention, as somebody who wants to write a bill to develop another task force herself, it's come to my attention, people have been talking about having us look very carefully at who is part of these task forces. The people that have been identified or the agencies that have been identified are very important ones, and it makes a lot of sense that they participate. But, at this point, perhaps it's also very good to step back a little bit and look at how often we are putting somebody from the Department of Revenue and Tax or one of the other offices on these task forces and making sure that this is done in so, in such a way... a way, or we give them enough time that they can be meeting their main duties, as well as balancing them with all the different demands that are being made on them. And so, like I said, that's something that I will be considering for myself as well. And I'd just like to put that forward and maybe have a little bit of discussion with the authors of the bill to just further strengthen that so that their intentions are able to be carried out and the needs of the community are able to be met in these, this way. So, Sujus Massey for allowing me to provide a little bit of comment.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Taiteno. Senator Taitegui for the closing statement.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Chairman Paris, appreciate everything again for having this public hearing and hearing this bill again. I'm happy that my colleagues had made comments that we will consider going into the, once this goes back to committee for consideration. You know, this, there's a lot of concern with regards to, you know, not providing the incentives needed for these fiber optic cables to come to Guam. Guam is number two in the Pacific with fiber optic cables running through it. Number two. Number one is Singapore. You mentioned yourself, Mr. Taidinko, that we have the U.S. flag waving over, and there's a reason why these fiber optic cables come through Guam. We're strategically located, and we have rules and regulations. We're not a country that doesn't have the utilities needed to support these landing stations. So, we are a great location for these fiber optic cables, these submarine cables coming through us. What I want to ensure that as we grow this industry, we also are not taking advantage of with regards to taxation, or the ability to charge individual cables coming onto our island. Because, you know, whenever a cable comes onto the island, you're going through the reef, you're going through the beaches. You know, these are areas that even, even REVEN tax has stated to us that they're only charged, what, $52? Or something, there's just, oh, that's a business license, I think. Like $52, if I'm not mistaken, business license.
No, we pay a submerged license annually. It's more than $52.
That's totally different. But the business license at 56 for a billion dollar company coming to our island. Now, I remember when governments were encouraging wideband or fiber optics coming through their states, because they were insured by these companies that had 100 attorneys, you know, to back up that individual fiber optic cable company, that this will lower the prices, lower the prices for those utilizing data. Unfortunately, we have not seen those lower prices, but all we've been seeing is that prices have gone up for utilizing Wi-Fi, for utilizing data. Where's the incentives that we were given to these broadband companies to lower their prices for data, information, and industry? It wasn't, it's growing, the prices are growing. Ask anybody. Their cell phones are costing more every year. So, the balance that my other colleague, the previous colleague, was talking about, a balance, totally into that, you know, making sure there is a balance. This task force put together, and if there's anyone else that can come on this task force, I'm very much open to it. It doesn't say shall, so hopefully they will come, you know, come aboard. But when I first started this, just for the record, when I first started this bill that talked about fiber optic cables and met with GIDEA, it sparked an initiative with them to start working on some of this and being prepared, because they know this bill was coming down the line, that they actually found in an article, $5.7 million in back rent owned by AT&amp;T. Five million. And we haven't even started a task force yet. And I do know through federal regulations that anything over 4,000 gigabytes, which definitely were second in the Pacific as far as fiber optic cables, 157,750 is given to the United FCC for landing, cable landing license. Guam sees no money of that. We don't get any of that money for them coming onto our island. So, these are some of the things that, through this task force, they're going to be able to discover, find out, maybe provide incentives. But of course, if we're providing incentives for fiber optic cables to come onto this island, then there should be a given, a give back to as well. So, I greatly again appreciate your testimony, and I'd like, Mr. Taidinko, if you can also give us a copy of your testimony as well, so we have it for the record, and we can use that as we deliberate this on the session floor. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taitegui. Mr. Timminglo, would you like to testify on this bill too as well? Okay, thank you.
For the record, my name is Nathan Timminglo, Executive Vice President and Chief Human Resources of Dokuma Pacific. Our company will be sending in written testimony in support of the bill. But if I could speak to a few concerns or comments that were made, there is no doubt that Guam is one of the most connected islands in the Pacific. But please understand that the industry has changed tremendously. In terms of just revenue that these companies see, I understand you made a comment around pricing. The landscape has completely changed in terms of how these, of how our companies operate. For many years, the model has changed. You know, before, back in the day, there was a ton of money made off of long-distance calls. If you remember, the pricing of just one phone call to the U.S. was quite high. You would also take note that prior to, you know, just even a few years ago, cellphone companies used to make money off of voice calls. You know, not many people make those calls anymore. And again, we provide that service, even up till now, almost for free. In terms of where the industry is changing, and it's not just for telecom providers, it's also for every other service provider that feeds off of our systems, data is what's going to change in the next few years and into the future. In terms of competition, and Dan and I are competitors with both of our companies, you know, the pricing of data is super cheap. You know, in terms of the cost per kilobit, that's, you know, if you look at all of the apps that you're using on your phone, all that data is basically, you know, it's going through the roof. And with the advent of 5G and technology changing, we're expecting that data usage in cellphones and other devices to more than double, or even 20 times the current amount. So, in terms of incentives for companies, and I'm not speaking of ours, but for them to have connectivity through the Pacific, we fully acknowledge the need for a task force to monitor and to see what's going on. And I'm not going to make comments on the other issues regarding rent payments, but, you know, there needs to be some type of added incentive for these companies to come through the island. However, we also remain cognizant and vigilant and review every, and review every one of these, you know, individually. But again, in terms of connectivity, it's going to change, and we just have to be ready for it. Because in terms of how we can take advantage of it as providers on this island, keep in mind, there are four of us, there are four telecom providers for this island. In other jurisdictions, you wouldn't have four competitors in an island of our size. So, that just speaks to, you know, the type of competition we have, and the pricing models that we have to have on an island of this size and population, you would never really have another jurisdiction have that many competitors. So, that just speaks to the opportunity that we have, being the westernmost U.S. flag-based island. But again, in terms of, I'm echoing Dan's statements now, it's, you know, we are in support of the bill, and we will provide testimony, written testimony. Yeah, thank you.
You know, the game changer happened with the submarine cable that we put in force back in 2017. And it was a game changer primarily for FSM and Palau, because they were excited to hear about that. And they had, they had been relying previously on satellite communications. So, any of you who had been to Yap or Palau prior to 2017, if you're making a phone call or looking at data, you know, you've experienced two things. One, excruciatingly slow, or two, you'd come home and you'd be like, wow, my bill has just gone through the roof because it's provided through sat, satellite communications, satellite feeds. They availed and took advantage of the cable traversing in their waters, and they put on, they asked, can we attach what are called branching units or spurs? And they have, and as a consequence, you know, that investment for them has yielded and resulted in their communities having lower pricing now, and greater capacity and capability and accessibility. So, you know, those are the upsides for those investments coming in. Everybody on Guam, like Nate says, everybody on Guam is all driving towards data now. Our networks are becoming data networks. They're not voice networks anymore. So, in order for that data to come in, we're going to need data centers, you're going to be, need that capacity, and you're going to have to encourage that investment to continue coming in here. Otherwise, you know, we're going to take steps back, and they'll go elsewhere. The potential investors will go elsewhere and make the investment somewhere else.
Thank you. Do any of you know of any companies that have expressed interest in partnering with Guam regards to data centers or undersea cables utilization?
Yeah, there's always, there's always companies out there looking at it, looking at the possibility. They're looking at the capacity that's available right now. Part of the whole ecosystem for a data center or data park is, of course, having to be including a, an established, very robust submarine cable capacity that's going to be able to ensure the transmission of data back and forth to wherever their customer, their end customer may be. So, that end customer can look at their information in real time without, with reduced latency, et cetera. So, yeah, there's a number that have expressed interest, and I'm sure if GIDEA goes out on a, on a tour and puts this in their suite of incentive opportunities, I'm sure they'll, you'll probably get people that are going to come in, avail of it and take a bite, take a bite at it.
And if I could echo Dan's statements, you know, in terms of data centers, you know, there's usually, people don't really normally have a full understanding of what they look like or how they work. But if you spend even five minutes Googling data centers, you'll notice that, you know, a lot of huge companies are taking it upon themselves to build brick and mortar data centers all over the world. And it's really because they really want to have presence in each of these places. And Guam is a routing tool for them to get into, let's say, Asia. Speaking for my own company, you know, everyone knows our sister, our neighbor islands, the CNMI, for many years, they only had one cable that supplied connectivity to the island in terms of bandwidth for internet. You know, our company, NTT Dokuma, with the help of our parent, you know, we built our own submarine cable and to the islands, and it was a huge investment that we undertook personally, just because we needed it. Because for many years, we were renting capacity from another provider. What that has done for just the CNMI alone, the prices have gone tremendously down. You know, where people were paying huge prices for even, let's just say, DSL or traditional, like one, one gigabit access at offices, the pricing went down from a few thousand dollars to even a couple hundred dollars. So, in terms of competition, it all has, it all has a say in how these affect the end user. And if, you know, the CNMI, if you could look to them and how that has changed their, their connectivity and their islands in both pricing as well as connectivity, I'm sure you can reach out to your colleagues there to see what it's done for them.
That's the perfect example, closer to home, with the Dokuma Atisa cable going between Guam and Saipan where they constructed it. There were, remember, Guam and the NMI were single-threaded until these guys came in and decided to make their own investment without any government assistance. They made the investment, and it was not insignificant, you know. I'm not at liberty to disclose the amount that these guys did, and I don't know if they want to disclose it. But it ended up, it ended up for the benefit of that community, for the businesses, the government, and the residents. Their prices dropped significantly, and they also now have additional capacity without being potentially subjected to being in the dark again with a cable cut, being single-threaded.
Thank you. The, I have noticed, maybe I'll talk to the sponsor later, but in addition to having big business invest in our community, it'd be great to leverage some of that money to grow our own clean economy as far as coding and, you know, being producers of the technology rather than the consumers of the technology. So, that's one thing I hope that we can also look into.
If I may comment on that, that's one area where our competitors, as competitors, we see eye to eye. There's no doubt we see IT as a future ecosystem for growth, both for jobs as well as for money to be made, an opportunity. But again, you know, that's why we're huge supporters of the Guam Regional Apprenticeship Program. That's one reason why we're pushing GCC, UOG to constantly redevelop their programs for students to learn about IT and learn about computers and computer science. That's also one reason why Mary Okada took it upon herself to find money for teens in high school to have a program where they could segue from high school programs in IT directly into GCC to get credit. You know, the investment is being made at all levels within our companies so that we can ensure that we're providing that, like you mentioned.
Thank you. Senator Castro, your follow-up.
Thank you, Chair. Just two follow-up questions, and I think you hit it on the head, the two of you, and I think that's where Senator Taitegui intends to go with this, this organization, this framework. We know that over 60% of the United States GDP is coming out of a service-based economy, so we're not looking at, you know, exports of any type of materials particularly. But just to follow up on your comments here, my two specific questions were, would you happen to know who the ILEC is, is there, for the CNMI? Would that, would that be either of your firms or no?
The?
The incumbent local exchange carrier there? Who's the, the infrastructure?
PTI, ITN.
Okay. And then, and I don't, I wouldn't know, I'm totally in the dark on this one, and that's why I'm very excited about this opportunity. Are there particular federal laws that govern Guam and the CNMI and how we connect? Do they treat us as two separate jurisdictions, two different states? And do you see an opportunity for us, for example, because I've been working, again, over the past three to four years on a Marianas Trade Zone concept, but this is completely new territory for me, and perhaps the same kind of thought process can apply to the Marianas. Is there a nuance there, an opportunity for improvement in federal policy between Guam and the CNMI as an example?
In the realm of telecommunications?
Telecom, that's right.
The only side, this is not regulated. This is by the FCC, this is deregulated. The only regulated part of telecommunications is the wireline, the landlines. That's the regulated part under the Telecom Act. And the FCC is moving towards more and more deregulation on the telecommunications, because they want to ensure that government doesn't get in the way of the investment, government doesn't get in the way of the operation. Of course, there's a role for government to ensure that, you know, everybody's operating right, or in this instance of Senator Taitegui, you know, the government and the community get its fair share of, you know, the investment and stuff as far as taxes, et cetera. But I, I'm not quite sure where you're going, what you're angling at, if there's additional synergies that we can probably formulate.
I think that would be it. So, synergies through additional, greater deregulation. But by landlines, did you mean twisted pair, or is that VoIP, or copper, twisted pair copper?
Well, VoIP is deregulated. That's a deregulated side.
Well, we can, we can take this up, ma'am chair, once the bill is passed. I would appreciate another discussion.
This is one suggestion here on your task force. For clarification, there's no administrator of the Public Utilities Commission. For clarification, there's no administrator of the Public Utilities Commission. So you might want to just indicate, it's just the Public Utilities Commission, there's staff of one person. And she works in tandem with the commission as well as the administrative law judge that they retain over there.
All right. Thank you, Senator Castro. Would my colleagues like to have any more additional questions or comments? Senator Taitegui? Okay. It appears there's no other questions, so thank you so much for being here and providing testimony and answering the questions. This is Massey.
We're going to move on to the last item of the agenda, which is Bill ninety dash thirty-five COR, as substituted by the sponsor, myself, Sabina Flores Perez, co-sponsored by Kelly Marsh Titino and Senator Amanda L. Shelton. It's an act to amend section five two one five of subarticle B, Article Three, Chapter Five, Title Five, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing for emergency procurement for threats to the environment, increasing transparency, and otherwise improving emergency procurement. So Bill ninety dash thirty-five is an important bill that strengthens the current emergency procurement law by increasing accountability and transparency, in addition to extending emergency procurement for circumstances that impact the health and safety of the environment. The substitute version repeals and reenacts the original bill because it retains the content, the original content of the emergency procurement law, and reorganizes it into a logical and practical framework in which to implement emergency procurement. It adds new sections that clarifies and reinforces best practices. Some of the features include the following. Bill ninety thirty-five reaffirms emergency procurement so that it can be conducted with such competition as practicable under the emergency circumstances. An awards of contract shall take into account price and delivery trade-off specified in law. Bill ninety dash thirty-five clarifies that emergency procurement applies to supplies, services, and construction works. So construction works is not as broad as the definition of construction as defined in section fifty thirty G, but it includes the emergency operation, repair, maintenance, or demolition of existing structures and real property improvements, as well as a building or assembly of temporary structures necessary to address within the time limits of emergency procurement. Bill ninety dash thirty-five increases accountability because it requires that all contractors are prominently warned that any contract or arrangement made to extend or renew emergency procurement or make a new emergency procurement based on the circumstances of the event of the emergency described in the, in the determination of need, it shall be void. In relation to the original bill, it retains key reform elements, which includes extending the clause of emergency procurement to include the health and safety of the environment, which will allow the governor to authorize emergency procurement when facing imminent unforeseen threats to the environment. Upon enactment, the governor may now act sooner when facing serious environmental threats rather than waiting and having to justify an environmental threat poses public health or safety risks. Alternately, it could be used to halt the spread of invasive species, and in looking at our recent history, this need is apparent. On September eleventh, two thousand and seven, the coconut rhinoceros beetle was the first, was first discovered in Guam, where it was confined to Lower Tuman. Attempts were made to quarantine and completely eradicate it before it spread. The Guam Department of Agriculture reacted swiftly, requesting the purchase of traps and equipment to eradicate it. However, due to the slowness of procurement, six months passed before the department's purchasing requests were complete, and during that six-month delay, coconut rhinoceros beetle spread far beyond its initial location, making it impossible to isolate the invasive species. And by two thousand and ten, the coconut rhinoceros beetle had spread to all parts of the island, and today it's responsible for the death of countless of coconut trees and severely damaging our ecosystem. Another key reform element that Bill ninety thirty-five retains from the original version is the extension of emergency procurement from thirty to ninety days. This extension would provide the time needed to set up procurement using competitive bidding process, and thus reducing the government costs and eliminating the use of emergency procurement for unforeseen events. Bill ninety dash thirty-five authorizes this emergency procurement for the duration of the emergency, for the ninety-day period immediately following the earliest determination for the, for the procurement. So at this time, we do not have anybody signed up to testify in regards to the substitute bill, but we did receive testimony from Guam, GSA, and we will seek further testimony from stakeholders and agencies involved. So, okay, so the one testimony that we received was from the Guam, from GSA, and some of the concerns, and we will definitely work with them and to address them. So some of the concerns that they said were, or questions that they had, was regard to section five two one five B two of the substitute bill. And so just to refer, what does that state? So B basically states that the determination, so emergency determination, describing the emergency procurement of specified supplies or services that is particularly necessary without delay to protect the substantial interests of the government. So with any procurement, it's necessary to establish a need for it, and in this case, for the emergency procurement, it's necessary to write in detail why it's needed. And so their statement is, sorry, do I have to write one? So according to their statement, they have a question regarding unrestricted, wait, excuse me, I think, give me a moment. Okay, sorry, okay, so let me, let me repeat, I was looking at the original bill, so I'm going to look at the substitute bill. And so their concern was with section B two requiring, so B two states that, I think they meant to say B one. Okay, so with B one, under the, under this substitute bill, it says, sending notices of requests for indications of interest to any contractors on a qualified bidder's list and others known to the government who have provided responsive supplies, services, or construction works to the government within the preceding twelve months of the type expected to be needed to meet the particular emergency needs of the government and requesting prompt expression. So as with any procurement, there needs to be established a qualified bidder's list, and in sending out solicitation notices, it's important to notify them as well as any potential bidder who has performed such services for the government in the previous twelve months. And so their, their question is whether there is a conflict between that section and the following section in the substitute bill. So the substitute bill in section two says that solicitation of at least three competitive requests for quotations in a manner of making small purchases as prescribed by regulations under authority. So they feel that there is a conflict here, and so I would have to talk with them, I feel that there isn't a conflict, so it's just a matter of maybe communicating to them what the, the issue is. The other part that they were questioning was five two one five C. So that one, this is a new section, and this is basically to clarify some of the previous questions on the original public hearing for this bill. You know, whether procurement meant that one procurement, or it meant for any procurement during the emergency period. And so what section C states is that there are no, no limits, there shall be no limit on the numbers of emergency procurement of supplies, services, and construction works, but no emergency procurement shall be made beyond the ninety days or whatever it takes to address the emergency. And so some of the questions that they have is, so who's responsible, who's the responsible government agency that would determine if there will be ongoing needs arising beyond the ninety-day period? The other concern that they had is if there was a protest, appeal, or court filed case on a bid. Their concern was, should that extend beyond the ninety-day period? How would that be addressed? So these are some of the concerns that I would continue to work with GSA to address them. So in the further amendment of this substitute bill. So, are there no further questions? Are, sorry, are there any questions from my colleagues, concerns? All right, thank you so much. And this, basically, this adjourns the, we now adjourn the committee, this public hearing from the Committee on the Environment, Revenue, and Taxation Procurement. We will still receive testimonies up until September sixteenth, this Monday at four P.M. And testimony can be dropped off at the Legislature Building. It could be emailed to office@senatorparas.org. So thank you so much. The time now is twelve-ten.